I'd like to call a meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vier?
Here.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Dr. Sully will be absent this evening. Mr. Danglak?
Here. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
May I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspapers in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. We have a presentation. The first presentation will be Employee of the Month, Mr. Brian Gleason.
Brian Gleason has been a City of Long Branch lifeguard for over twenty years now. Besides performing hundreds of water rescues throughout these two decades of public service, Brian has done a lot more throughout this City of Long Branch. Brian maintains a constant involvement in philanthropic events like Surfing for Vision and NYC Sea paddle. On top of this, Brian has been an impactful member of the lifeguard competition team, successfully competing at the local and national level. Brian currently is a lifeguard supervisor using his years of expertise in and around the water, helping mold young up-and-coming rookie lifeguards. Brian remains an instructor of a junior lifeguard program which he helped start some fifteen years ago. He has watched the program grow from seven, only seven students, to over a hundred and forty. In his free time, Brian enjoys fishing, surfing, traveling. In the off-season, Brian helps run his family business in Costa Rica, providing visitors with a unique experience that only local knowledge could provide. Congratulations, Brian, on the employee of the month.
Thank you.
How are you doing? Thank you, guys. I just want to thank Long Branch and the council and Mayor Pallone. A special thanks to Danny George and Stan Zubo and Chris Kuiper. I don't know if you guys go to the beach, but it wouldn't be the same without those three guys. Thank you, guys, for giving me my spot over there and trusting me to help keep it safe. Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations.
Now, we have a presentation, Belmont Avenue Project.
Council President John Junko is here down here on the seat of chair on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is proposing a redevelopment in Long Branch, the project's owner is Del One, located in twenty-seven dash thirty-seven.
Mr. Junko, is that, Alex, is that microphone?
The mic, please.
Yeah, if you can.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. You want me to start over?
Yeah.
Anyway, the application is seeking redevelopment designation and status for twenty-seven dash thirty-seven on Third Avenue, which has block two-eighty, lot eleven oh-two, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen on the tax maps. The property is currently up on the screen, and it is on the top side of Third Avenue, on the right of the screen, and it is the property that it now has the arrow and the three buildings immediately to the right, or in this instance, to the, you know, to the right of what you're looking at. And those buildings would be demolished and replaced with the Belmont, which is a proposal of first-floor retail and thirty residential apartments above with parking spaces provided both under and around the building. For our purposes of this presentation, I have with me our architect Jim Montefort, who will make the presentation of describing the project, and for any questions that may come up, Jason Victor is our civil engineer and site designer. So, the project is designed to meet the criteria of the redevelopment plan, and we've been through review at redevelopment, or at the planning level, and are now asking the council to, one, accept this project, and, second, adopt the proposed redevelopment agreement that has been negotiated between me on behalf of our clients and your council on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
So, if you don't mind, Mr. President, I will ask Mr. Jim Montefort to begin describing, first, the site and what the site plan will look like, and then what the building is proposed. One other comment, we were able to get most of the material on the screen, but I think, but the architectural renderings were not, are not reduced to electronic form yet, but we have an exhibit to show you.
Okay.
So, Jim?
Good evening, everyone. Jim Montefort, architect. You have seen this project. Several months ago, I presented it in front of the board, and since then, I had sat down with Mr. Graviano, and we discussed ways of improving the project. So, some of the things we did were to create more streetscape, landscape, to push some of the buffers in, to create a wall around the project with a planter bed that has ivy that grows up, so it's a green wall around the perimeter. So, we did make these changes, and it kind of molded the building a little bit, and we changed the feel of the aesthetics of the building. It was more contemporary when I first did it, and we discussed moving to a more of an industrial, light industrial feel with more brick, kind of complement what the PACS building is next door, which is coming shortly. So, the site plan shows how the building's laid out. So, Third Avenue is across the bottom, Belmont runs vertically up the page. You can see you pull in to the property off of Belmont, and then it loops back around. It goes under the building and back out on Third Avenue, so you have two access points. There's parking that is exposed to the outside, which are the ones across the top, and it runs halfway down the side, and this little gang in the middle. There's no building over that. The gray area that is right here is indicating our building, so these spots that are under the building are all these numbered spots. There's a stair tower that takes you up. There's two stairs. There's our garbage room on the, built into the building on Belmont Avenue.
And that garbage is totally enclosed?
It's enclosed. I'll show it to you. On the elevation, there's a garage door that opens up, and they roll the containers out, dump them, and put them back. There's also a garbage chute that feeds from every floor, so the tenants don't have to carry their trash down. So, the building is basically a forty-one thousand square foot building, and it has a two thousand square foot corner store at the first level that addresses Belmont and Third. We staggered the building back and covered it. We have added planters as you go up Belmont here with a trellis that comes out to give some more landscaping to the front and the back. Our lobby is in the center, and then there's an elevator that takes you up. There are thirty residential units. Three of them are ones, twenty-seven of them are twos. They're rental. They range from eight fifty square feet to eleven hundred and sixty. We're proposing a rooftop amenity package where the whole roof will be green with plantings and patios and outdoor seating. We also are providing a rooftop amenity clubhouse, which is a third of the floor below of it, so we're treating it as if it were a mezzanine, and that'll have a gym and open seating and garage doors that go open, so the whole thing can be open on nice days. It'll just be like an open pavilion. The building is forty-two feet high to the rooftop, and there's, I could show you the elevations. There is a basement for storage for the unit, so they each have place to store their stuff. There's bike storage down there. We also have an area on the site up towards the trash and where you come in, there's a bike rack there for the public, if somebody wants to put the bike there. So, our look of the building that we ended up with is this more industrial feel, and I tried to blend some materials in so it doesn't look like one, one big building. You can keep going. Elevations are, there's bigger elevations if you go through. Actually, stay there, that's fine. So, the front of our building, that our Belmont entrance for the apartment complex is right in the, right in the center of Third Avenue. It's highlighted with this canopy, and then our corner store is the piece on the corner where it's cut out. And then I have a mix of brick, cast stone, composite panels, and this screen at the top is the rail that protects people on the roof, so that's our guard. The colors are like a, kind of like an aged brick with a grayish color panel with the concrete, and it has blue accents on the building, like navy blue. And this is the view from Third Avenue. And then I have this view from Belmont, so you can see our corner store in the lower right-hand corner. This is our clubhouse with the garage doors. There's the wall that goes around. Here's our garbage enclosure, which has a carriage house-style door on it, and then you can see how the architecture is kind of broken up, so it has a feel like it's a couple different thing, buildings going on.
Jim, would you go back to your first elevation, please? I want to point out a feature to the board. Your planner had recommended during one of the reviews that as, and Jim, would you identify the drive-through for the parking lot? And then again, on Third Avenue, there's an entry to the parking lot. In both of those areas, the planner requested, and we've accommodated a design, that when people go by and look in, at the end of the view is the landscaped area. And it's not really a big deal, but I think it's a nice feature because it's something that starts to take that part of the town and maybe make it a little more, a little more friendly. So, from, Jim, why don't you just do the Third Avenue view through the gate, and then from the driveway on, or on.
That's back here. So, this is the actual, we added a wall along here. It's a six-foot-high masonry wall, and it has a bed of green ivy that'll grow up the wall, so the wall become a living wall. And then we have added more planting across the back and along this side, and we added some street trees in the center of the parking lot, as well as more trees around the perimeter of the building with large sidewalks.
Show sight on your will from the streets in both ways how it gets to the landscape.
What's that?
Right there, from the entrance on Third Avenue through the building, and when you view it, it goes right back to that landscape.
Yeah, and then here, too, you see the, you'll see the wall with the landscaping on it.
And that was a recommendation from the planner before it was effective to make it a much more pleasant building. Already, I think, it's a beautiful building, but to add to it would make it a little more friendly. So, Mr. Chairman, we have completed all of the steps, or, Mr. President, we've completed all the steps up to the point of asking the council to accept this as a redevelopment, and then we're prepared to go to the planning board in the event of an approval, and we have modified the plan to reflect various inputs we have received from the planners and other aspects of the town review, city review in the planning process to date.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Anyone have?
Can I just, I just ask two questions, just to complete the presentation. The first is, does your client owns or controls all of the property?
Our client is the contract purchaser of all of the property for this. They are in contract now, and the contract is in force and effect and for the entire site that we are proposing.
And, and the redevelopment agreement does not include a tax abatement, nor does it include a provision in it that says you have the right to come for a tax abatement?
Regrettably for my clients, the answer to that is yes. It does not include a tax abatement.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
You said there were thirty?
Thirty apartments.
Yeah. Has there any study been done if this is going to have any impact on the school system whatsoever, as matter how many children might be living there?
I don't have the exact number for this, but a typical garden apartment produces less, in the standard, there was a study done statewide by Rutgers, and they produce a typical garden apartment, which I think this is probably close to, produces like one-third of a student per unit.
One-third?
But that's, may not be directly applicable to this project, but that's a general study that they made. It turns out surprisingly low in rental apartments and in townhouses.
And my other question is, on the front of the building, what is the setback off the street?
Um, what's our setback?
Are you complying with?
We'll find out in a second. Mr. Victor will give us the exact.
On which?
Complying with the plan, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
We're complying with the requirements. In fact, it was, we were asked during planning to move the building back a little further, which was done by Mr. Montefort, and of course, the design. I'll get you the exact dimension in a couple of seconds.
From Third Avenue, the requirement, there's actually.
Zero.
A maximum front yard setback requirement from Third Avenue of fifteen feet.
And you can't go further back than fifteen feet?
Right, and we're at thirteen point eight, not counting the repus, but we're at thirteen point eight. And then on Belmont, again, maximum front setback from curb line of fifteen feet, and we're at six, so compliant and hold.
This ordinance has a maximum, you can't, you have, you can't go beyond that in terms of setback.
In other words, are we keeping the same line that's there now, or are you pushing it back a little bit?
Well, I think we're actually back a little from existing.
Yeah, I think that's what Nick.
Yeah, I think we're back.
That was the purpose.
And I think we line up with the PACS, the PACS building that's getting ready to be constructed. We line up with them very well.
Yeah, because our game, we like to see wider sidewalks.
It is a wide sidewalk. It looks like it's about, from, how many is that sidewalk?
Yeah, it's a very wide sidewalk.
Yeah, it's like ten, fifteen feet wide, the sidewalk.
And there's one store, you said, there?
Hmm?
There's one store in the building, or?
The building height?
No, the store. You said there was a retail.
One store, the corner store, yeah.
There's one.
One here, in the corner. The corner store.
Oh, okay.
I have a, since we're going green, do you consider putting some charging stations for electric cars in the buildings coming up? Because that's something we should consider, because a lot of more and more people buying electric cars these days, and.
You mean an electric charger?
Correct, yeah. I mean, it's something to consider.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, at least if you don't put it in, leave it ready.
Might even want more than one there.
Yeah, definitely.
It's not a major.
This building sets up perfectly for a charger. You just put it on the back wall inside the garage.
Yeah, it's just, you know, instead of somebody buys an electric car, you don't have to go out charging.
And is that something that can be handled at the planning board, Mr. Junko?
Yes.
The planning board, a site plan detail at the planning board?
That would be part of site planning detail, but we'll bring it to the board's attention in the event it doesn't, it isn't brought to us by the board, we'll make sure that that gets there. Well, I think I might see council in there. So, that is, you know, the outline of the project. We have, we could spend a lot more time talking about it, but I understand you have a busy agenda. Are there any other questions I can answer for you, or our consultants can answer?
Counsel, anyone else?
No, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I need a motion to approve the minutes from the August fourteenth meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Vier?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Mr. Victor?
Yes. Consideration of ordinance, public hearing, and final consideration, there are none. Ordinance for introduction, there are none. Public participation, resolution for all general comments. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone in the audience who has a comment, please step to the microphone, state your, your name, your address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes, and you will only be able to speak once. If anyone wishes.
Make it clear it's on any issue. This is not just on this.
This, this is on any issue, not necessarily the presentation, but on any issue, this is public portion. I would just like to say, at the last meeting, I was a little lax and let some, a few people go over. We're trying to keep it fair and even to everyone, so when, when you hear the bell, the five minutes is up, and I would ask you to, please, have, take your seat. Thank you, sir. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Victor Alvarado. Victor Alvarado. I'm a new resident over here in Monmouth County. I reside in Long Branch now. I'm from Union County originally, from Elizabeth.
Mr. Alvarado, could you just bring the microphone a little closer to you, please?
Thank you.
Okay. I was just released out of prison December thirty-first of last year, a few months ago, and I just reside over here in Monmouth County. I just got my life in order. I got my life put together, and I like it out here. I've been doing, you know, a lot of things out here with my family, and I got my grandson out here with me and stuff. I just got a job a little while ago at a taxi camp, in a taxi company for short cab. I was driving cabs out here. I really enjoyed my job. It was a good job until about two weeks ago, I got a letter from, from the police station saying that I cannot get a taxi license because of my criminal history, so now I lost my job. Besides that, every other job that I had since I've been out, I lost them. I always get a job, once they found out about my background, that I did time, they get rid of me. They fired me. I don't know what to do anymore. I don't want to go back to the streets. I changed my life. I'm a grandfather now, you know, I never had these things when I was growing up as a youth. You know, I had a rough little childhood, so now that I got my life in order, I got degrees, culinary arts, I weld, I do landscaping. Every job that I had, once they found out about my history, they got rid of me. So, I went to, what's that, One Stop Career Center, and they helped put a resume for me together, and they gave me some paperwork. They gave me, what's it called? It's called a federal bonding, a federal bonding program, which gives me a paper of a bonding for any job that I go to, to give them a paper, to insure me with security with that job. A lot of people don't know about that. A lot of jobs that they know about it, but I got the paper. It comes from the state. They still don't give me no job. I'm without a job. My driver's license is good. I don't have no, no accidents on my license or nothing. I was driving for the cab company, short cab, and I went over there and I tried to talk to them. I said, "Listen, you know, I never, I haven't done nothing. I've been home eight months. I've been doing good. I don't have no accidents, nothing. I'm not on parole. I don't have probation. Still, I don't got no, no opportunities." They got rid of me, and so now, they told me to write a letter, send it over here, give it to the clerk, come over here and try to, you know, talk, see if anything, you know, could reside of the situation, as I'm here right now, so.
So, so there's a process in, in, we have an ordinance that regulates licenses for taxi cabs and drivers of taxi cabs, and there's an appeal process that's in there, so I'm not sure whether or not.
We received the letter, and he's going to be scheduled for a hearing before the council at the September eleventh meeting.
There you go. So, you have a right, so you'll have a right to come at that point in time, the police department will come and present what it is, and then you'll be able to present your, kind of present your side of the story.
Oh, okay. What date is it?
September eleventh.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
If I could just make a comment, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Teresa Mottazi. Whoops, hold on. My name is Teresa Mottazi. I live at two forty-five Atlantic Avenue in Long Branch, and I'm part of the Long Branch Citizens Police Academy alumni.
Teresa, maybe just a little lower.
A little lower.
And a little closer. Sorry about that.
How's that? Good? Okay, all I really want to do is, I just want to go over our itinerary for Police Week, if that's okay?
Sure.
Since the public is here, and I'm sure that we'll have it out in social media and all over the Facebook and all of that, so if I could just go over each of the seven days very quickly, I'd appreciate it. The first day is Monday, September sixteenth at five forty-five. We will have law enforcement and community conversation at Monmouth University Bay Hall Auditorium on the first floor. Tuesday, September seventeenth at twelve noon, we will have senior social with law enforcement at the Senior Center on Second Avenue in Long Branch. On Wednesday, September eighteenth at four o'clock, we will have the Community Beach Volleyball Tournament at North Bath Avenue Beach in Long Branch. On Thursday, September nineteenth at five o'clock, we will have a Wellness Care and Healthy Lifestyle with Zumba at the Monmouth Health Community Center at three thirty-five Broadway in Long Branch. On Friday, we will have the Habitat for Humanity of Monmouth County at three oh-seven Hillside Avenue in Long Branch, and that's September twentieth at nine AM in the morning. My favorite, the Motorcycle Run Fundraiser, Harley Davidson, Saturday, September twenty-first at ten thirty, at the Harley Davidson Facility, which is now on Route thirty-six in West Long Branch. On Saturday, September twenty-first at three o'clock, we will have the First Responders Art Exhibition by the students at the Long Branch Library. And then we finish up on Sunday, September twenty-second at four PM, what is called the Blue Mass at Saint James Episcopal Church, three hundred Broadway, Long Branch. And if you need any more information, you can probably look on social media, because everybody picks everything up on there. And I really want to invite all you guys out to support the police department, and I want to invite everybody here to come on out and support the police department as well. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Avery Grant, four zero five Atlantic Avenue. First, I'd like to compliment you on the youth activities that are going on in the city. I've attended several of them, and they have been well accepted. And also, the streets and the public works are doing an excellent job, so I compliment you on those things. But let me get to the point that bothered me. In the link the other day, apparently you're getting some concerns about the tax issues here in the city, the assessments that's going on, the tax rates, that type of thing. And you indicated that your budget went down a penny, and the Long Branch School Board went up a penny. Well, that's true, but you're not getting to the root of the problem. The root is these tax abatements. The people are not, will not be paying the right amount. If they paid the right amount, the tax rates would go down. And you don't mention that we on the Board of Education have had two-hundred and eighty million dollars of schools built with state money, meaning that the whole state paid for those, not Long Branch on itself. And right now, the high school itself is seventy-one million dollars, and luckily, we kept the old historic high school because the city asked for that, and citizens asked for that. And on September ninth, we will be opening that, because our population has grown. So, again, we're saving a lot of money, so let's don't look at the school district as the issue. The school district is these tax abatements. And of course, Vinny LaPorte, myself, we've been working very closely with the senators and the assemblymen down in Trenton. And we got the bills like we wanted to, except that they won't go to retroactive issues. But every time it gets on the counter, they pull it off because the League of Municipalities shows up and they say they're going to fight it. And if it's ever defeated, it won't get back up there. But we're not going to give up on that. So, you're doing some good things. Businesses are opening up, but let's place the blame where it is. It's on these tax abatements. And again, with the city, with the eminent domain, that was another ill they did with the public. And the mayor Snyder came before my wife as a commissioner, said they didn't have the money to do a reevaluation at the time, and my wife gave him two years to do it. But what happened was, he knew that with the idea of pure village, the value would go up, and he cheated them. And my wife said if she'd known that, she would have kicked his butt. So, please, give consideration to the cost and the rate of living here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Vincent Laporte, thirty-three Ocean Terrace, Long Branch, requesting one-minute notification. I have three quick questions for the developer, Mr. Gianco. On that project, tax abatements, we understand aren't going to be awarded, but will it be a fully taxed building? It's not going for tax exemption?
Excuse me, sir. Sir. Mr. Laporte, if you could just direct the questions.
Will it be a fully taxed building?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
No tax, no tax exemption whatsoever?
No tax exemption.
Market rate, rentals?
Yes.
And you just passed the ordinance on affordable housing, nine nineteen. What is the contribution to this mixed-use development?
The assessor's going to have to make the assessed value, but it'll be whatever the percentage is in the ordinance times whatever the proposed assessed value is for the property.
It'll be applied as a mixed-use fee with the retail store.
Correct. Oh, yeah. It'll be, they'll be both assessed. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to reference Resolution one eighty-three nineteen. Resolution, item of revenue, Monmouth County Office of Aging Grant, additional funding, seventy-nine hundred dollars. This is an increase of twenty-four hundred from the prior, up from fifty-five hundred to now seventy-nine hundred. I would like to thank the senior director, Pacrinicky, and her staff for securing this increase in the funding. And also thank them for the continued success in running the senior center. Which, by the way, Ms. Pollan, I still have heard, any defense of the senior director from you on the public record with the baseless and fraudulent allegations leveled from Alice Kessler on the public record. Many are still waiting, Mr. Pollan, for your defense of the senior director on the public record. Recently, another matter, August eighth, two thousand nineteen, U.S. District Court ruled against Kushner. Jersey City won. The court saw through the mirrors and smoked, but we, quote, "Jersey City," stood firm, refusing to be bullied regardless of the company's name, that company being Kushner. That was the statement of Mayor Philip. The question now becomes, what competence and backbone did Mayor Philip and his counsel have that Mayor Pollan and the Pollan team didn't have? Mayor Pollan stated he was concerned about the costs of litigation. And again, Jersey City responded through their spokeswoman, Kimberly Scalcione. To date, the Kushners have not received a nickel from Jersey City, and we don't expect that to change, end quote. And finally, the law firm hired by Jersey City, Light de Palmer and Greenberg, stated the following, quote, "The complaint was nothing but a vile attempt to hide the plaintiff, that being Kushner's contractual shortcomings," end quote. In this city on the Broadway matter, Long Branch Partners had no assignment of a thirty-year tax abatement to a seller until such was put into place to accommodate the new developer, Kushner, by this counsel and mayor. The bottom line is, the Pollan team didn't fight. You didn't have the backbone to fight Kushner. You caved in and the taxpayers of this city take the hit. City Attorney Allen will probably respond after I speak with some workless flawed colloquy on the matter.
Mr. Laporte, you have one minute.
Thank you, clerk. But the bottom line is, Long Branch is a loser compared to Jersey City. And the people of this city should open their eyes to find out why this mayor and counsel did not fight Kushner the way Jersey City fought Kushner and defeated him. All in all, Team Pollan continues to be junk government.
This is the public portion, right? The public participation?
Correct.
Ernest McNolley, I forgot where I was born.
Where do you live?
Oh, Second Avenue, Long Branch. And I live in Asbury Park now. I don't think I can get through too much of what I wanted to say, but I'll try what I can. It's critically important, like when you hear what I consider astute, caring people from Long Branch come up here and talk about very important things like the school system, the cost of the police department, the amount of ranking police officers versus patrol officers, the cost of the fire department. These, these are critical things. And when you start to cross-balance these across the cost of giving out tax abatements on, I, I would imagine, is everything on Ocean Boulevard probably tax exempt? And are they all in the pilot program, counsel? I don't know if anyone knows. Pilot program means you do a development and you don't have to pay into the school tax for the city. That's another gift that you get. So you see these things stuck in the curb all around the area. It says, "Oh, buy here, it's a pilot program," which means...
Excuse me, Mr. McNolley?
Yes. I'm not allowed to?
No, you continue to speak, but you're supposed to direct to us.
Well, I like to talk to the audience, too.
Direct to us.
Why, I can't talk to the audience?
Yes, you can, but you can hold your own meeting.
What?
You can hold your own meeting and address them, but if you're speaking to the council, then by, you can say the same thing, but we're asking you to address us.
I'm speaking to everybody and I don't really expect an answer from the council. I never get one.
Okay.
So why would I speak to you?
Let me know, let me know when you're done. But in five minutes, you will be done.
Thank you. Well, maybe you could help with the timekeeping. So I, I think this thing with Pure Village and Ocean Boulevard is never going to reconcile between the tax abatements, between the pilot program. It puts the school on its own. It puts the burden on everything west of Ocean Boulevard, which is all the homes. And look, I ride around Long Branch a lot and let me tell you, except for Ocean Boulevard, Long Branch is struggling. You got people that would love to fix their houses, they're getting no help, their taxes are going through their leaky roof. It, it, it doesn't make sense that a, that a new group would come in and just pick up where the other group left off. I mean, heck. I brought everything with me. You remember all these? Remember all these things, you know? Long Branch first and, you know, Long Branch first, citizens, citizens first, you know, homeowners first. So far, all we've seen in the last year is, is developer first and tax abatement first and increase the sal...
Mr. McNolley, you want to bring the...
Increase the salary of the police department? I mean, how, I think we have a chief that makes a quarter million dollars a year. For what? Being the twenty-fifth most dangerous place in New Jersey? You get rewarded with a quarter million dollar salary? Excuse me?
Fire.
What?
Fire you.
I wish I could. I wish I could. And when we went through all this election process, can I get a one-minute notice?
Sure.
Thank you. When we went through this election process, half the people here weren't supposed to be here. You know, by somewhere or another, Roebuck was going to be gone and Martin, the financial guy, might have been gone and Mr. Zubu would be gone and Mr. Greenspan would be gone and Mr. Siciliano would be gone and Mr. Guzzi, you know? Everybody'd be kind of like trimmed down a little bit instead of continuing the Schneider take advantage of the rest of us. But none of that's happened. It's like, you know, we got five, six new people and that's it. Everything's the same. And I like to say, I still have a minute at least?
You have one minute now.
Thank you. I want to say one thing that's very important. A few weeks ago, I think it was last week, there was a big party in Southern Long Branch on, on the boulevard, like at a mansion, multi-million dollar. And I just want to say to the mayor, I hope you know that almost all your city employees, your firemen and your police were all there at the Republican fundraiser. So what I'm wondering with this council is, you get in a position and then you let the opposition rake it out from under you. It can't work that way. How was that?
I'm sorry, sir. Was that a question?
Yeah, I said, "How was my speech?"
What was the question again?
Did you like my speech?
I'm sorry?
Did you like my speech? I give up. What? Did you like what I said? Did you like anything I said, mayor?
Mr. McNolley, I'm sorry. I respectfully disagree with a lot of what you said.
Okay.
Anyone else? I need to have a motion to close the public portion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Under resolutions, we can take the list of resolutions as a consent agenda. Can we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Boe?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Mr. Dangor?
Yes. Under applications, we have none. Miscellaneous business for the good of the order. Councilman Viera.
Yes, good evening and thank you for coming. And I'd like to congratulate Brian Gleason. He, he's special because I worked with him a couple of times over at the beach. We had the accessible beach. We had some people come over and he came and helped us and with Surf for Vision, too. And he was extremely educated and extremely nice to these people. And, and it's nice to have a city employee in, in that conference. And I'd like to congratulate him again and thank you for coming.
Councilwoman Wilt.
I'd like to make sure that you are all aware of an event that's happening this Saturday, and it is the National Overdose Awareness Day. And the group that is sponsoring this in Long Branch is the Mayor's Task Force on Substance Abuse, HERS, which stands for Health, Education, Addiction, and Recovery Support. And what this day is all about, it's a national day to increase awareness about substance abuse, about the opioid epidemic, but most of all, it's a moment for all of us to honor anyone who we have lost to addiction. So we'll, the way the event is going to happen, it's going to be in Slocum Park. It's going to start at eleven o'clock, from eleven to five. But the event itself, in terms of any sort of a ceremony, will actually be at four-thirty, where there will be some comments made, again, in honor of people that we have lost and some speakers who are actually dealing with addiction themselves, who have recovered or have had some very personal issues with, with addiction. Throughout the day, you can come to Slocum Park and we're going to have a tent, a pop-up kind of thing, set up where we're going to have purple ribbons, because purple is the color for, for addiction, where people, where you can write a message, a message of love, a message of hope, any heartfelt sentiment that you have in terms of people or this whole situation. And the ribbons will be hung from the, from the tent and it will become a permanent, permanent memorial. Because at the end of the day, we're going to be able to take the ribbons that will be on a, on a string. And we're going to hang the, the ribbons in, you know, different areas of the town. You know, for example, it might be in the library one month, it might be in the schools another month. So it'll be a permanent, really, living memorial and tribute to the people that, that we love. So I hope you'll be able to stop by Slocum Park this Saturday. It's going to start at eleven, but the service itself will be at four-thirty. The service itself will end with a citywide moment of silence and prayer, again, in, in honor of these people. So, which will be actually managed through Facebook. So that'll be a citywide moment for all of us to kind of say some prayers. So I hope you can, hope you can join us there.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wittes?
I just would like to thank everyone for coming this evening and wish everyone a happy and safe Labor Day weekend. And, you know, we look forward to continuing to work and helping all those in our community from now on. So, thank you.
Mayor Pollan?
I'd also like to thank everybody for being here this evening and for your comments. I, I wanted to just give you a reminder that the Shop Long Branch Property Tax Reward Program has officially started. As we've discussed, the program is designed to encourage local residents to support local businesses within our city while receiving a tax rebate. So for the list of businesses and for information on how to get a card, go to www-longbranch.org. We also have a couple of open positions here in the city. Please go also, again, to www-longbranch.org under employment to view them and to apply. This is kind of important. I wanted to give you a beach update after Labor Day. So as you know, the beaches are, you know, will be open continuously through Labor Day. But then, beginning on September seventh, on the weekends, on the seventh and the eighth, and for the next two weekends after that, so the three weekends following Labor Day, there will be, let's see, lifeguards will be on stands at the Great Lawn, Ocean Place, Chelsea, Morris Cottage, and Brighton. In addition to that, we'll have two EMT lifeguards patrolling the rest of the beach hour, beach area. Stan, am I correct about that? Great. Our next coffee with the mayor is September seventeenth from seven to eight-thirty at the Buggy James Center. Come out for light refreshments and conversation. All are welcome to attend. And again, I'd also like to congratulate Brian Gleason and thank you all for being here this evening.
Thank you. I too, like Councilman Wittes, would like to wish everyone a, a safe and happy end of the summer and Labor Day weekend. I would also like to just, for everyone who's listening and, and watching live, that we, while we're out having a good time, enjoying family and friends, just try and remember that we would like you to do it in an orderly fashion so everyone can have a good time and it ends up with nothing, nothing more than just fun. So the, the police are not having to call for any reason whatsoever because it could get into a situation that is not pleasant for anyone, whether it's certainly for the community, the town of Long Branch, and/or the police department. So again, just enjoy yourself, but keep in mind that we would ask that you just enjoy yourself in an orderly fashion. Thank you very much and God bless you.